Call to order the June 11th meeting of the Cary Town Council. Want to thank everyone for joining us this evening from your home as we continue to follow the governor's state of emergency orders. We're streaming tonight's meeting virtually. The majority of council is present here in the chambers with me tonight. We all had our temperatures checked before entering the chamber. And you can see we've adjusted our seating so that we're socially distanced. And each person has been given hand sanitizers and masks as they deem appropriate, to use as they deem appropriate. To meet requirement of the remote meetings law, we have one council member participating remotely through WebEx, and that's Councilmember Jack Smith. And Mr. Smith, thank you for joining us. Can you hear me? Jack, can you hear me?
I'm gonna say no.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. Hey, Jack, can you hear us?
I know, he doesn't look like he can.
Well, we can see you. You're not moving or saying anything, so I'm assuming you can't hear us. As soon as Jack gets plugged in, we're gonna get going here. Jack, can you hear us?
I can hear everything.
It might be.
We can move ahead with the pledge of allegiance.
All right, while we work on getting Jack remotely connected, we will go ahead and start with our ceremonial opening, and I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tem France for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the adoption of the agenda, we need to make sure we have all seven of us onboard. Jack, can you hear us now?
They're working out some technical stuff.
They're working on some technical issues here. I'm assuming Jack won't have any issues with adoption of the agenda.
I think we could ask Chris if it's okay to move ahead without him for that piece.
Yes, I think we can start.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with that while we wait on the technical issues to be resolved.
Okay, Kaylin, do you hear me?
Who is that?
A staff member.
So is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Okay, roll call vote, starting with Jack Smith, if you can hear us. Mayor Pro Tem France?
Aye.
Mr. Yurha?
Aye.
Ms. Lou?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Now, I vote aye as well, so the agenda passes. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And we have Dr. Kevin Baker of BKL Research on the line. He has every two years since 2000, Dr. Baker will present some of the findings of our 2020 biennial citizens satisfaction survey. Dr. Baker, thank you for joining us, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna give you a brief review of the results from the 2020 biennial citizen survey. Overall, let's move on to the methodology. We conducted a telephone survey in January and February, the residents of Cary. Now, this was prior to COVID-19. We surveyed 400 residents over the age of 18, and we hit both listed and unlisted and wireless databases, but 92.8% of the sample ended up being wireless. Our margin of error plus or minus 4.89%. Took about 13 to 17 minutes to complete a survey. Age and gender were surveyed to be representative in the sample, and a refusal rate was 17.5%. Now, two years ago, it was 25%. We generally use the nine-point scale. Move on to the town government staff. The town government staff earned their best marks to date overall. Matter of fact, courteous and promptness of response, both those grades increased. Courteous turned to A, all the other grades were A-,. This is the best performance thus far for the staff overall. And fairness, this is the first time we measured that overall. We'll go into cleanliness and appearance of public areas. Parks and Greenways both earned A's, and that continues from 2018. But if you notice, bus shelters, streets, meeting and road sides, all the grades went up to A-, from a B+ this time. And when you see something in blue, that means the grade did go up, and the asterisk means it was statistically significant. So very good job there on an increase. Move on to maintenance of streets, sidewalks, traffic signals, signs, and pavement marking. All of those earn solid marks. Matter of fact, streets and traffic signals went up a grade, both statistically significant. The rest were solid grades. And then we asked any areas that need attention from the residents, and they mentioned two areas mostly, Maynard Road and High House Road. And they also mentioned issues, and this is across town basically, potholes, lack of sidewalks, and the need for traffic signals is a key issue. Move on to the police department. Police department did exceptionally well, earning all As from all of the service dimensions, except for problem solving, that was an A-, and that was a significant increase. Matter of fact, all the grades went up for the police department this time. About 20% of the residents had contact with the police in the last two years. Most of that was with a police officer, 71.3%. This is the best the police department has also done. Notice a very large increase for response time from B+ to a straight A. Move on to the fire department. Fire department basically earned the same grades it did last time, and they were excellent, A+'s across the board. About 8.8% of the respondents had contact with the police, excuse me, the fire department. And the fire department continues to be the highest rated of any department in Cary. Parks and Recreation did exceptionally well this time. As across the board, cost of fee went up, a grade from A- to A. About 24% of the respondents had participated in one of the programs for Parks and Recreation. The major programs were camps, art and art classes, basketball, and then baseball, softball, T-ball was in there. This is also the best overall performance for the Parks and Recreation Cultural Program. Let's look at Cary overall as a place to live. The mean went up from 8.15 to 8.3. The grade remained an A-, 98.7% were on the desirable side of the scale, only 0.3% on the undesirable. This score was only beaten by 2004, when the town earned 8.31. Quality of life in Cary also went up. Matter of fact, it was statistically significant, 3.21 to 3.38. Now, this is a five-point scale, which means three is the midpoint. Anything above three means it's getting better, anything below three means it's getting worse. Note, the mean was 3.38. The better percentage went up from 30.2 to 39.8. The worst went down from 12.9 to 7.9, so very impressive there. This is the second highest mean the town has earned, exceeded again by 3.44 in 2004. Well, the people who said things are getting worse, we asked the respondents, we asked, what are the issues you see? And they said the big issues were traffic with 14 comments, being overcrowded with 11, and then overdevelopment with seven. How about recommending Cary as a place to relocate? Exceptionally good marks. 90% of the people said yes to that, and 6.8 said maybe. Only 3.3 answered no to this. Well, then we asked them, why did you answer no to that? And the reasons given were overcrowded with 14 comments, cost of living with four, lack of affordable housing with three, and high taxes also with three. Next, the most important issue facing Cary, hasn't changed, growth and traffic. Though, the number of comments for both had decreased, had decreased this year. Now, let's look at some other changes in there. Other big gainers were affordable housing went from eighth to fourth, and the loss of green space went from 12th to seventh. What about declines? Well, schools went down a couple notches, third to fifth, streets and roads, fifth to eighth, and in crime and safety, took a fairly large drop, six to 13. Now, respondents can also answer no or none, I see no issues, and positively, this went up from 51 to 64 this year. Safe in Cary? Respondents, very safe in Cary. Matter of fact, 99% of the respondents were on the safe side of the scale. The mean went from 8.22 to 8.35. This was significant, and this is the highest rating earned to date. About keeping residents informed and involved, the first question we asked them was, how satisfied are they with Cary making information available at important services, project issues, and programs? And it went from 7.49 to 7.69. That was statistically significant, and the largest mean earned to date. And satisfaction with opportunities to participate in the decision-making process? Well, the mean also went up from 6.98 to 7.53. That also was the highest mean earned to date by the town. How about solid waste services? Well, we looked at four curbside services, and all of those went up, and it was statistically significant for each one of those. And if we converted those to a grade, well, garbage collection would earn an A, solid waste recycling and loose leaf would earn an A-, an A-,. All of those grades went up this time, and none of those had satisfaction below 95%. And let's go to the focus areas for the town council. And the first was recreational facilities. That mean went up this year from 8.02 to 8.17. That's the highest mean earned yet for recreational facilities, and there were 96.7% on the satisfied side of the scale. How about the effectiveness of town council keeping Cary the best place to live, work, and enjoy? That also went up, 7.75 to 7.80, representing the second highest mean earned, and there were 92% on the effectiveness side of the scale. However, the focus area for environmental protection, that one went down from 7.64 to 7.39, and that was significant overall. There were still 86.1% on the satisfied side of the scale and 3.9 on the dissatisfied. And we asked those who were dissatisfied, what suggestions would you give to improve? And they said, well, they would like to have weekly curbside recycling, seven comments, stopping the loss of green space with five, and then the recycling rules are a bit strict with three comments. How about transportation? Well, the mean slid in transportation as well from 7.36 to 7.02. That was statistically significant. 81.5% were still on the satisfied side of the scale, and 6.1 were dissatisfied. Again, we asked the dissatisfied group how to improve that, and they said, well, improve traffic with second comments, adding bike lanes with five, improve public transportation also with five, and then adding sidewalks with four. The last focus area is planning and development, dropped a bit too, 6.97 to 6.80. Even with the drop, it's still the third highest mean earned overall. 78.5% were satisfied and 9.3 on the dissatisfied side. And we asked this group how to improve, and their suggestions were the control over development with 19 comments, limit high-density housing with 11, improve the infrastructure with six, improve schools with five, and then limit building expensive housing also with five comments. Let's talk about downtown. Reasons to visit downtown, the major reason again is the restaurants, and that has really gone up from 87 to 130 comments. By the way, 87.3% of the respondents had visited downtown in the past year. What else changed? Well, the library went from 10th to second. The brewery with the beer stores went from 16 to fourth. Parks went from 16 to six, and events went from eight to fifth. What about the declines? Well, the water fountain went from four to eight. Visiting fun pleasure went from third to six. Art and Arts Center, fifth to eight. And then shopping and shops, it dropped slightly from second to third. And we asked, why did they not visit downtown? And the reasons were basically no interest, don't like it, too far from West Cary, their work schedule, they're too busy. Our six people said they don't know of much in downtown Cary. So the big picture, well, 13 grades improved, seven remained unchanged. No grades declined among our 30 common service dimensions. Those are the mentions that look at the standard departments in town. 27 grades are in the A range, and that means either A+, A-, or A. And three grades are in the B range. No grades below that for the common service dimensions. So how does this compare? How good is this year? Well, I'll give you the previous years down there. The previous best year was two years ago, 2018, when the mean was 8.37 and A-,. Well, this year, it's 8.43, and for the first year, Cary earned an overall grade of A, which makes it the highest it's been rated thus far. I think the results are very impressive overall, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address those now.
That's great information. Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you so much. Gosh, Mr. Stiegel, 27 As and three Bs. That's gonna be hard to keep you there on the peak.
I know. I wish they were lower when I started.
Thank you again, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Speaking of Mr. Stiegel, we're gonna recognize him next for the manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Later on tonight's agenda, the council is going to discuss the possibility of creating a task force to look at diversity and inclusion. In light of what's happening in Cary and throughout our country over the last several weeks, I wanted to take this opportunity to let our citizens know once again that Mayor Weinberg has signed President Obama's pledge related to police use of force. For those who aren't familiar with this effort, Cary will be joining cities throughout the nation in taking four specific actions. Number one, we will review our police department's use of force policies. Number two, we will engage a diverse segment of our community in our review, possibly through the task force. Three, we will report the findings of our review to the community and ask for feedback. And four, we will institute reforms if necessary. The mayor signed the pledge this week, and staff has begun putting together a framework to support this effort, which will be directed out of my office. So far, we've hired Inga Kennedy out of Atlanta to help. Inga and her team specialize in effective outreach with minority communities, and I'm told she's done amazing work for Cary in the past in this area. We will keep you and the community updated regularly on this project, and with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stiegel. This time, I want to check in with Councilmember Smith and make sure he can hear and he can speak. Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I can hear you. So I've been here, I've been watching, it's just been all silence, so all is well. Thank you.
Very good. We're glad to have you onboard.
Looks good.
We now move to public speaks-out portion of our meter, meeting. The instructions for comments for our public speaks-out were attached to the posted agenda. Participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, the 311 online portal, and regular mail. All comments received before noon today were emailed to council, and a printed copy was given to council at tonight's meeting, and we have it right here at our desk. At this time, I'll open up public speaks-out and call on staff to summarize comments that we have received.
Yes, so we've received one comment from David Mum about the demographics of the Cary Police Department traffic stops.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And there are no call-in speakers, live call-in speakers, so we'll close public speaks-out and move to the consent agenda, which is item four. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we're gonna take a moment to review our consent agenda items, and please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have update policy statement 132, effective utilization of reclaimed water, and ratified changes two, and we have acceptance of Seerstone Tefra hearing report and adoption of the resolution approving the Seerstone project. Would council members like to pull either one of those for discussion? Hearing not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second, discussion. All right, roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Smith. Do you approve the consent agenda?
I approve.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem France? Councilmember Yurha?
Aye.
Councilmember Lou?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bush?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the consent agenda is approved. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that applied for public speaks-out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is on the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. Manager Stiegel will introduce the item. Chief Financial Officer Karen Mills will present the staff report, then we'll open the public hearing. Counsel will not take action this evening. Mr. Stiegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep my comments brief. I just wanted to thank the members of the community that we have been able to speak to about this engagement, the council, for your patience, which has been a very complicated budget process due to all the very obvious reasons related to COVID and to Karen and her team, which have really been quite adept at being able to make a lot of adjustments on the fly. So just with that, we'll turn it over to Karen for the formal presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel, for the introduction. Good evening, council. I'm here to introduce the next opportunity for citizen participation in preparation for the budget fiscal year that begins on July 1, 2020. Recommended budget includes authorization for operating and capital expenditures totaling $427.6 million. While the entire recommended operating budget is an 8.6% increase compared to the current fiscal year, when we focus on general fund operating expenditures, there's only a 3.7% increase. The recommended budget holds the 35 cent tax rate steady. However, given the real property revaluation on January 1 that demonstrated that Cary property values have grown in the last four years, this tax rate is equivalent to a 5 cent tax increase over the calculated revenue-neutral rate of 30 cents. At 35 cents, this rate is the lowest recommended municipal tax rate in Lake County. The budget holds solid waste and recycling fees at 1950 per month and does not include a utility rate increase. This budget is a culmination of 13 different scenarios that we considered after the pandemic impacted our community and our financial resources. We analyzed the commonalities of the 13 scenarios and saw the reflection of all the voices that we have heard year-round, such as those of our boards and commission members, through social media, through the biennial survey that we just heard about, and the messages that you've shared from the campaign trail. It became clear that the priorities of Cary's diverse population and varied citizen interests are reflected in the values to provide ongoing community safety and service, to maintain our infrastructure investments, and to continue to invest in the future. This budget remains true to our values for financial stewardship and the goals set forth in the Imagine Cary 2040 Community Plan. It holds steady on essential services and requires an even stronger partnership with some of our most valued partners, our employees, because this budget does not include any increases in authorizations despite continued moderate growth in our population, and does not include any funding for employee merit increases. Many people are also interested in funding for our nonprofit partners that deliver services for citizens. It's been in current practice to fund an amount equal to $1 per citizen for a pool of nonprofits that supplement Cary's cultural arts, and another pool of $1 per citizen for nonprofits that enhance other facets of quality of life in Cary for our citizens. Based on a rounded estimated population of 169,000, on January 1, the longstanding practice of financial support for each of these pools is included in the recommended budget. This budget pushes forward on the priorities our voters made clear last November in the shaping Cary's Tomorrow Bond Referendum. On my next slide, I'll show you the bond projects included in the FY 2021 recommended capital budget. The remainder of bond referendum projects are included in future years in our capital improvement plan. Other long-term planning included in this year's recommended budget is funding for land acquisitions that would lay the groundwork for future facilities. This slide summary shows you the bond projects that we can get started with in FY 2021. We would bring on projects for improvements in streets, sidewalks, and intersections, and additional downtown parking in preparation for the downtown park that has already been funded and is in design. Two new parks west of Highway 55 are funded with $11 million in bond authorization. Black Creek Greenway and other park improvements and renovations, including the skate park, would also move forward in this recommended budget. Before we get started with the public hearing, I'd like to touch on some of the other ways we incorporate citizen input into the recommended budget and our schedule for approval. This meeting has been advertised as the official saggatorily required public hearing specifically on this recommended budget. Addition, staff requests budget public input year-round. On a monthly basis, we have and we will continue to prompt our citizens to share their thoughts and values about the budget through social media and the Bud newsletter. We provide multiple ways for citizens to tell us what they're thinking by email, phone, Twitter, or Facebook. And of course, citizens always have the opportunity to comment at any public speaks-out portion of your regular council meeting. Any citizen comments on the budget that come in by social media, email, or voicemail are shared with you in the quarterly reports throughout the year. We advertise this specific formal public hearing beginning May 29, and today, we've shared two comments that arrived by noon today since that advertisement. And after the public hearing starts, I'll summarize those citizen comments as part of that process. When we start, I'll highlight where we are in the budget process. After tonight's public hearing, there will also be a second opportunity at the June 25 council meeting for the public to share their thoughts. Schedule anticipates council budget adoption that same night to prepare for the new fiscal year that will begin on July 1. Thank you so much for your attention to this critical component of our fiscal management. And now is for the public hearing on the town's FY 2021 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. And now is the time for the recommended fiscal year 2021 budget. As I mentioned earlier, participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, 311, or regular mail, and all comments received before noon today were emailed to council, and a printed copy is here at our desk. So at this time, I'll open the hearing and call on Karen Mills once again to summarize the comments received.
Thank you, Mayor. We got a comment from Isha Desai, who recommends more funding for the Cary bus system, more programs for at-risk youth, and more minority community outreach, as well as support for small businesses, especially those downtown. Today, we saw Christine Hamilton's comment on Facebook, where she recommended that we take savings from canceled parks programming due to the pandemic and redirect it towards street and greenway maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. And we have no call-in speakers?
Right, no call-in speakers.
We have no call-in speakers, so therefore, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Any questions or comments, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a question. Councilmember Smith and myself both met with Mr. Stiegel a couple days ago to talk about the budget and explore possible options, some of which included, you know, the proposed tax rate. And we talked about options, maybe could we do a smaller increase this year, followed up a year or two down the road with another increase versus the 5 cents all at once? And then we also discussed possibly And then we also discussed possibly reducing, you know, utility rates, given the amount that we have in our reserves there. So I guess I was just curious when we might get some of that information back as far as potential options.
Yeah, next week. So, and I would offer that to the rest of the council too on using our financial model. You know, you can do kind of what-if scenarios pretty easily on that. And so we should probably, actually might even have some of that one out tomorrow, potentially.
Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments about the budget? I'll remind the public that we'll be, we are scheduled to vote on the budget on June 25, and you have the opportunity to contact us between now and then with anything you would like to say about the budget, and we'll certainly listen and consider your comments at that time. So that concludes that item, and we'll move to our second public hearing, which is 19REZ06 Carpenter Fire Station PDD rezoning. And Principal Planner Katie Dry will introduce this item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, and it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. This is a request to rezone 14.6 acres at the intersection of Carpenter Fire Station Road and NC 55 and Indian Wells Road. The site is the former location of the Edwards Grocery Store. There is also a few single-family dwellings and a farm pond on the site. The site is next to the Northwest Cary YMCA and Crosspoint Church. The Blakely subdivision is across Indian Wells Road to the south. The current zoning is R40 General Commercial and Office Research and Development, and the site is within the Watershed Protection Overlay District, Jordan Lake Subdistrict. The applicants are proposing a planned development district, or PDD, minor zoning. A PDD zoning district allows innovative design and layout that would not otherwise be permitted by the LDO. This PDD includes a master plan shown here. Building and parking areas are in orange. Open space, streetscapes, and buffers in green. The PDD would allow up to 300 multifamily units and 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office. The applicants are also proposing one acre of open space, community gathering space, which will include a pool, dog park, et cetera. Design elements will include covered postal boxes. HVAC equipment will be located on the roof of residential buildings, and 200 of the units will have balconies or patios. This site has furnished on three roads. There will be a 20-foot type A streetscape proposed along Carpenter Fire Station Road. This proposal is a reduction of 30 feet from the LDO requirement for 50 feet. A 50-foot type A streetscape would be along Highway 55. This streetscape will be averaged due to existing easements along Highway 55 with this proposal. Along Indian Wells Road, there would be a 30-foot type A streetscape. The applicants are proposing to clear and grade the streetscapes along Carpenter Fire Station Road and Indian Wells Road. And to offset the clearing, the plantings within the cleared streetscapes will exceed the minimum height by 25% at the time of planting. Buildings will be a maximum of 60 feet high and will transition to a maximum of 50 feet high within 170 feet of Indian Wells Road. This transition to a lower height is in response to citizen requests and feedback from the neighborhood meeting. There will be access on Highway 55 via a ride-in, ride-out. Other access points will be on Indian Wells Road, as well as the private access road next to the YMCA. Because the site is so close to the intersection of 55, there will be no access on Carpenter Fire Station Road. The applicant has committed to widen Indian Wells Road to build a left-turn lane on Ansley Stream Lane into the Blakely neighborhood. The applicant would be required to widen Carpenter Fire Station Road, NC 55, and Indian Wells Road to meet the Cary Community Plan requirements. However, the current language could lead to challenges with enforceability due to unclear timing criteria. The applicant, however, has indicated a willingness to continue working with Cary on the zoning condition as the case moves forward to the Planning and Zoning Board. As previously noted, the LDO states that PDD zoning districts allow projects of innovative design and layout that would not otherwise be permitted. And in return for this greater flexibility in site design requirements, PDDs are expected to deliver exceptional quality design, above-average open space, and circulation. The LDO also states that PDD districts should not be used as a means of circumventing the town's adopted land development regulations. In this case, the applicant has proposed to provide alternative standards in the following areas. For streetscapes, the applicants have proposed to reduce the streetscape width along Carpenter Fire Station Road to 20 feet in width. This is also due to road widening that will occur along Carpenter Fire Station Road, which I'll talk a little bit further about in this presentation. They're also proposing clearing and grading along the streetscapes for Indian Wells Road and Carpenter Fire Station Road, and proposed averaging along NC 55 Highway. To offset this, applicants are proposing to increase the size of the plantings within these streetscapes. They're also proposing additional trees to be planted above and beyond the LDO requirements for the site. The applicants have submitted a parking reduction for the multifamily units, are proposing 1.6 units per, 1.6 spaces per unit, which is a 30% parking reduction. They have submitted a parking reduction justification for this request. They're also proposing to install electric vehicle charging stations on the site, and they've noted that there will be no parking reduction requested for the office component with this development. The applicants are also requesting to remove a potential champion tree on the site, and to offset this, they're proposing to plant additional trees above and beyond the requirement. Staff has conducted a preliminary review of this case using policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. Applicable policies come from the Live, Work, Shape, and Move chapters. We note Policy 2 from the Live chapter states that there should be provision for high-quality housing to accommodate a variety of lifestyles, households, ages, cultures, and incomes. And Policy 3 states there should be additional housing options in new neighborhoods. And this area along Indian Wells and Carpenter Fire Station Road is redeveloping as a new neighborhood, and this proposal would add to housing options in the area. When we look at the Work chapter, we note the proposal would further Policy 1, which is intended to allow housing close to major employers in RTP, including housing for singles, millennials, and small households. However, this case may only partially support Policy 6 by incorporating small-scale office into the site. The rezoning provides options for new and existing small business uses. However, we note the PDD misses a prime opportunity to truly mixed uses since the amount of office proposed is minimal. According to the Future Growth Framework Map, which is found in Chapter 6, this site is within a mixed neighborhood designation, as shown in the pink shade here on the map. The boundary of the mixed neighborhood is generally within two miles of Research Triangle Park. It is intended to provide housing options for employers within RTP, and therefore would include a variety of residential land use types and densities, and a limited amount of non-residential uses may occur in the proprietary neighborhoods. Currently, there are 10,000 dwelling units within the mixed neighborhood boundaries. The housing consists of 53% detached dwellings, 29% townhomes, and 17% multifamily. And given the subject sites at the intersection of two thoroughfares, the proposal includes also 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office. The proposed use for the rezoning could be consistent with a mixed neighborhood designation. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan identifies the Panther Creek Greenway corridor extending through the site. The Carpenter Fire Station Road widening project will provide additional bike and pedestrian connectivity along the road once construction is complete. On the subject site, the applicant has proposed to tie the portion of Panther Creek Greenway into the streetside trail along Carpenter Fire Station Road. Staff concurs with this approach. This rezoning also coincides with a Cary and NC DOT road widening project for Carpenter Fire Station Road from Cameron Pond Drive to NC 55 Highway, which will be funded by the 2019 Shaping Cary's Tomorrow Parks and Transportation Bonds. The project will widen the two-lane road to a four-lane median divided section with curb gutter, street lighting, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The project's in the design phase with an anticipated start and completion of 2022 to 2024. And just east of Highway 55, the Carpenter Fire Station Road realignment project is currently under construction, which will be completed in 2022. As design has progressed on this road widening project, it appears it will impact the subject property more than originally anticipated. The intersection of Carpenter Fire Station Road has been shifted slightly to the south to achieve a safer alignment with the Carpenter Fire Station Bridge and Intersection Improvement Project just across NC 55. And as a result, the applicants have requested a streetscape reduction along Carpenter Fire Station Road, which was previously noted. The neighborhood meeting was held for the site on May 1 of 2019. There were 15 attendees. Questions and concerns were regarding the number of proposed units, types of units, loss of open space, trees, the height of the buildings. Since the public hearing notice was given, we received eight emails with questions and comments on the case. And also, in response to the neighbor concerns shared at the neighborhood meeting, the applicant has made several changes that have been reflected in this proposal, some of which includes stepping down of the building height, as well as a commitment to a left-turn lane at Ansley Stream Lane. In preparation for the public hearing, properties within 800 feet of the subject site were notified. This exceeds the state and LDO requirements for notification. Those notified by letter were provided with information on participating in the remote public hearing. The properties were also posted with public hearing signs and ads placed on the town's website. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's representative Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group is on the line to share comments. Following the public hearing, both the applicant's representative and myself will be available for questions. Mr. Barron, you may begin.
Great. Thank you, Katie, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It is a pleasure to speak to you via phone. This is the first, and fingers crossed a last, but appreciate the flexibility, and I know all the hard work that the town has put in trying to get meetings scheduled again, and certainly appreciative of the opportunity to present this case for you tonight. Here with me on the phone or watching via the internet are Caitlin Shelby with Wood Partners. That is the proposed developer of this site. And then we also have representatives of Design Resource Group and Kim Lee Horn and Associates. All are watching via YouTube or otherwise and are interested in hearing the feedback that we have to receive. From a big-picture standpoint, Wood is an opportunity. They see this site as a site that really lends itself well to addressing two key demographics. First, obviously, as staff mentioned, with the proximity to Research Triangle Park, they see this as an opportunity to capture a demographic of folks that are moving to this area to work at RTP and need places to live, kind of the singles or first-time renters, couples. And so kind of the 35 and under demographic is one that Wood is targeting with this. Additionally, as a five-story apartment community, it will be elevator service. That's something that's required by the building code. And so another key demographic that Wood Partners sees as being addressed here, especially in this new neighborhood, given the manner in which it's been built out, the key demographic that they see there is the move-down, the 55 and older population that wants to live in Cary but maybe doesn't want the big home. And so I know you've seen that on other cases. That's not a novel concept, but given the location of this site from a big-picture standpoint, that is certainly what has drawn Wood, Wood Partners, to this particular site. I'm going to focus on three points tonight, and I will keep my comments brief, recognizing that this is a perfectly imperfect manner of presenting the case. I'm trusting that the slides that I'm referring to are up on the screen, and if they're not, I apologize in advance, and we'll follow up. The three points that I would like to address are, first, related to the appropriateness of use. Second, I will touch on the streetscapes that Katie mentioned. And third, I want to address briefly the neighborhood concerns related to height and traffic. With respect to the use, we believe that this use is supported by the Cary Community Plan on balance. We believe it is appropriately located and it's appropriately conditioned. As Katie mentioned, this site is designated as a new neighborhood. The Cary Community Plan in a number of places recognizes there's a continued need for diversity of housing options, and we believe that a multifamily development of this type in this location will certainly contribute to that. As the staff report indicates, the build-out of this particular new neighborhood is imbalanced as it relates to multifamily. New neighborhoods call for three primary building types in that geographic area. That's single-family detached, townhomes, and multifamily. And multifamily is far and away the least well-represented of all of those three housing types. So we believe that this will help to create some balance in the new neighborhood area and contribute to the diversity of housing that is located in and around this general vicinity. Additionally, we believe the site is appropriate for the density that is being proposed. Obviously, the site has great access to transportation corridors. It's surrounded on three sides by public streets. You've got Carpenter Fire Station Road to the north, Indian Wells to the south, and obviously Highway 55. So you've got great proximity to get folks off of neighborhood streets and out into the major transportation corridors as they make their way into the employment centers, and RTP is about two miles away. And so obviously, it's got great proximity to RTP. Additionally, I would note it does have great access to the town's future park. That's, I think, a third of a mile away, heading west down Carpenter Fire Station Road. This site will be picking up a greenway that has been constructed through the YMCA parcel. We'll be extending it through this site. We'll tie it in to the streetscape, and there will actually be two different opportunities for access to that future park. One, along the streetside trail, and then also through the greenway that has been extended to adjacent to the site. So we believe that, you know, with those factors, it is an appropriate site for density of this type. Additionally, we believe it's a proposal that is appropriately conditioned. As Katie mentioned, it does have a mix of uses. Wouldn't pretend that this is an office development by any stretch of the imagination, but we don't believe that this is an office site. We believe it is appropriately a multifamily site, and that by providing 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office opportunities, it will provide meaningful workspace for folks who happen to live and work in that area, especially for folks who are moving to work in this area and are going to be operating under this new normal, where I think employers are going to start to look to downsize their office quote-unquote footprint and look for creative ways for folks to work virtually, whether it's by phone, as I'm doing right now, or otherwise. I would note a couple of additional matters related to the use and the zoning, and that is there are conditions related to architecture. I won't go into those, but we believe that those are quality architectural conditions that contribute to justifying a PDD and this location. And the third point on the conditions I'll note relates to the new upper-story trees. As Katie noted, our plan proposes beyond anything that the LDO would require in terms of streetscape and landscaping and parking areas. It also proposes a condition that stands alone, requiring the installation of 20 upper-story trees. My client is aware of the ongoing conversation that the Environmental Advisory Board has had, that the town is currently having with respect to tree preservation, but more importantly, tree canopy. And we're excited about the opportunity to introduce a condition requiring the installation of new upper-story trees. And so that, we believe, makes the use as conditioned on balance, the right use in this location and consistent with the Cary Community Plan. On the streetscape, I will talk just about Carpenter Fire Station. I do want you to understand kind of how this case started and where we have gotten to with respect to the significant widening. So the impact of the widening really can't be underscored. When we started, it was in one location, kind of midstream. We were made aware that there were some additional turn lanes that were going to be required, and then subsequent to that even, that there were some additional changes that were made that shifted the intersection further south. The net result of that is compared to where we started in this case to where we are today, there is 40 feet of additional right-of-way that is being required of the site that wasn't required at the time we started. The net result is that the back of curb, or excuse me, the back of the right-of-way for Carpenter Fire Station Road will now be 56 feet at its widest point south of where it currently exists. And so I do want to make that point, that we're never excited about making reductions in things like the streetscape. We recognize how valuable those are, but really, that has been a product of us having to pivot on multiple occasions to what have been significant chunks out of that Carpenter Fire Station frontage. The result of that widening is significant on the lots that exist today. Now, I believe on the screen what you have is the master plan. What that master plan doesn't show is that this assemblage is not a single parcel. It's actually multiple owners and multiple parcels. Up along Carpenter Fire Station Road, there are two lots, what I'll call Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 2 is the old grocery store there on the corner of 55 and Carpenter Fire, and Lot 1 is adjacent to it to the west. Currently, Lot 1 consists of 1.73 acres, and Lot 2 exists of .9. Currently, Lot 1 consists of 1.73 acres, and Lot 2 exists of .92 acres. When you factor in the right-of-way that is required for widening as part of the town's and MT DOT's widening project for Carpenter Fire Station Road, Lot 1 is reduced from 1.73 acres to 1.20 developable acres. Lot 2 suffers an even worse fate, going from .92 acres as it exists today to .39 acres of developable land. And I make that point because they are separate owners, and the parcel to the south is also a separate owner. We believe that this site and the assemblies that is before you presents an opportunity not only for the town to acquire the right-of-way as part of the dedication process, but also to ensure that these sites develop in a contiguous fashion, that you don't have individual lots that are carved up fairly significantly, that really don't have a whole lot of value without being part of an overall assemblage. But I just wanted to talk a little bit more in more detail about the impact of the Carpenter Fire Station Road widening and how it has impacted this project as well as the existing landowners. And we've been working closely with the transportation staff to try to work through those things. You know, in order to offset that reduction that's being requested, we have, as Katie noted, increased the plantings by 25% at the height of installation. And the last point I'll make on the streetscape is that there's a tree inventory included in your staff report. That tree inventory shows that the existing trees that would be removed as part of our clearing efforts are mostly scrub pines. There really isn't, you know, a whole lot of trees in there that have any value. So we believe that our replanted, you know, type A buffer will be a far, far superior and more attractive and aesthetic appearance from Carpenter Fire Station Road than what you would have if we were to preserve the scrub pines. The last point I'll talk about is neighborhood concerns related to height and traffic, and we received those at the neighborhood meeting. We've been working on ways to address those. As Katie mentioned, one of the things we have done is we have stepped back the height, and that is we originally, we have 60 feet for the overall development, but for the first 170 feet adjacent to Indian Wells, we have reduced the height of the buildings to 50 feet. Also, another point that is not apparent from the slide that you're looking at, which is two-dimensional, is the three-dimensional reality of how this site is going to develop is important, and that is the grade of Indian Wells Road from the road to this site drops off pretty significantly once you leave the road. And our grading plans anticipate that there will be roughly eight to 10 feet of grade difference before you start to see surface parking areas and/or buildings. And so while we have a maximum height of 50 feet of the building, the practical impact of that reality is will shrink it closer to kind of 40 to 42 feet, we believe. And that's something that we will communicate to the neighbors when we meet with them after this discussion. And then the last point with respect to traffic, we received a lot of feedback at our neighborhood meeting expressing concerns about conflicts with vehicles leaving this site, leaving Ansley Stream, and leaving the Blakely subdivision, and then entering into the YMCA. And we've worked with the town to come up with a geometry whereby we are essentially creating a less, a dedicated left turn lane into Blakely that our users will never use. Our traffic, our TR generation, or TAR assumes that not a single vehicle will use that traffic movement, but we're happy to work with the town in an effort to offset concerns that Blakely has with respect to vehicle conflicts in that area. And so with that, there's a lot of other things I could talk about, but I did for purposes of how this meeting is structured, wanted to focus on those three particular areas. We're anxious to continue working through the process. I have received copies of the emails that folks have sent over to Katie, and I will be following up with each of those folks who have reached out in an effort to set up a virtual meeting whereby we can continue getting feedback and working through the process. And we look forward to seeing you all again, and hopefully with a recommendation or finding from the Planning and Zoning Board of Consistency with the Cary Community Plan. And I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have at the conclusion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Dry, if you have no other comments, I'll start the public hearing.
No other comments from me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Now's the time for the public hearing. 19 REZ 06 Carpenter Fire Station PDD rezoning. And once again, the participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, 311, and mail, and comments received before noon today were numerous. We had several. And the printed copy was given to us at council meeting. And so I'm going to call on Ms. Dry once again to summarize the comments we received.
Thank you. We received a total of eight comments, and I will summarize some of the key points from those comments. Of those, six noted that they had concerns regarding access points for this development as well as traffic impacts. There were six that noted they had concerns with the reduced buffers and streetscapes. There were four that noted concern with tree loss on the site, three that were concerned with environmental impacts, and we also had three that commented on the number of units indicating they believe that there were too many units proposed for this site. Some of the other comments that we received included a suggestion that this be an age-restricted development, a suggestion for reducing the speed along Morrisville Parkway. There was a suggestion for increasing the buffers and streetscapes above the minimum requirement of the land development ordinance. Concern regarding clear cutting, there was a note from a few commenters regarding electric vehicle charging stations, and perhaps that the number proposed was too low, given the amount of electric vehicle adoptions. Also concerns regarding wildlife corridors and specifically around the existing farm pond on the site. Also concerns regarding a lack of pedestrian options. And there was a note that there was a preference for residential being proposed on this site over non-residential. This concludes the comments we received. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. And I'll check with the clerk to make sure we had no live call-ins.
Correct. No call-ins.
Since we had no live call-ins, that would end the public comment, and so I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council for questions or comments. And I'll start off with Councilmember Smith. Any questions or comments from Mr. Smith?
No, it sounds like a lot of the issues regarding tree canopy are being addressed, and that seemed to be most of the concern, the comments that we've received. So looks like progress is being made there, and I'm encouraged to see that happening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other councilmembers, question, comment? Ms. Robbins?
Thank you. I have several questions for staff, for Ms. Dry. My first question is, the entrance of Ansley Stream, how many feet is that from Highway 55?
I don't have that dimension in front of me, but we can certainly provide that in the staff report as the case moves forward.
Okay. I drive that movement quite frequently, and I'm concerned about the number of, the amount of distance between 55 and the entrance to this neighborhood, not so much for the cars that are turning right off of Indian Wells into what would be an apartment/office community, but for those that would be coming out of that community. So one consideration I would like staff to look at is the possibility of making that left turn from, for Ansley Stream, maybe a dedicated left. I'm just somewhat concerned about that. So I want to make sure that we're not creating a safety hazard going forward. I think when I met with some citizens, and this is going back many, many months, some people had asked about the possibility of even having a traffic circle there instead of having just a, you know, the typical intersection. My question about the 30% reduction, what I'd say about that is actually more of a statement than a question. I don't think we're really qualified to say whether a reduction here is appropriate or not. This is something that we've discussed several times now among the council members and our staff, the fact that we are requested frequently, particularly, it seems like in this area of Western Cary, for reductions in parking for apartment complexes. But we have no history to be able to say, or no study done, that says that having a parking reduction is actually appropriate. And we've granted a few of them, but I'm really concerned, because once you have an apartment complex that doesn't have ample parking, you have a real problem on your hands, and I don't know where people would go to park if this, if they don't have ample parking here. Are they going to park along Indian Wells? Are they going to park at the YMCA? Are we going to have a new problem there? So I really would strongly encourage our staff, before we vote on this, to perform some kind of study on our behalf. And we've talked about this. We have the technology because we own drones, and you all own, you know, the town has Esri. So between those two technologies, we could study this and be able to come up with a definitive answer about how much parking is demanded by apartment complexes in this vicinity. So I really encourage us to do that before we take a vote on this. The open space, Ms. Dry, that's being shown there, that's where the farm pond is. Are they planning on draining the farm pond, or are they keeping the farm pond and putting like a walkway around it?
My understanding, the applicant intends to drain the farm pond.
Okay.
But it would be preserved as open space, as shown on the PDD.
Okay. All righty. I have no problem with the streetscape reduction on Carpenter Fire Station Road. I think, given the fact that the widening there is impacting their project pretty significantly, and they have a pledge to do a 25% increase in the tree heights at the time of planting, I think that is sufficient. So I'm satisfied with that. I do still have concern about the tree plantings along Indian Wells. I think the people who live on the backside of the community adjacent to the south are fearing that they're going to have a lot of lights coming in from vehicles and maybe from the apartment complex, so I do have some concern there. And I also think that the 50-foot height, I should say, thank you to the developer for offering the 50-foot height reduction along Indian Wells. I think that is an improvement. One last thing I want to mention, we have some buildings that put HVAC units on the roof. Since they make a point of saying that they're going to put them on the roof, I'd like to have some kind of conversation with them about the possibility of screening those so that they don't look like, I will just hold up our police department as an example of something I don't like, where they put the HVAC stuff on top and it looks like you have an RV stuck on top of a really nice-looking office building. So I'd like to have a conversation with them regarding how they could screen that so that it doesn't look like an eyesore from the homes or from passing vehicles or the YMCA, whatever. I just think that we should be looking at that kind of condition when they're offering HVACs on the roof. So that's it.
Other comments?
I can respond to that.
Absolutely.
As a matter of fact, just checked, we are going to release an RFQ for a multifamily parking study next week.
Okay.
So that'll go out next week.
Do you think we'll get the results before we have to vote on this one?
Well, we certainly can. Those actually don't take a lot of time, parking studies. So I think we can, we can certainly make sure that that is done before we do this, and I don't think we would impact or delay this petition too much.
Okay.
So, yeah. Well, we'll make, a lot of people are looking for work, and so the consultants have more, are moving at a pretty rapid pace right now. So I'm pretty confident we can do that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Because we also, we do, we do agree and believe that we have excessive parking requirements in general. And again, the more land that's developed, the better that is for our tax base. And so we have a vested interest not only in making sure there's enough parking, but that we're not creating just, you know, these seas of parking spaces. And so...
I totally agree with that. I think we have a lot of commercial buildings that are overparked, like grocery stores and big boxes. So we don't want to see that either. I just want to make sure that we're not burdening the overall community
Yeah.
...by being underparked.
Definitely don't want to be doing it project by project. Right.
Right.
And so doing it in this way will give us a conducted due diligence in a way that's more responsible.
I think that's good. Thank you for doing that.
Other comments?
I guess my concern is the reduced streetscape. I understand the impact and appreciate that of the Carpenter Fire Station Road widening. That is a major impact on this development. And I also understand that the tree cover that's there now is certainly nothing to write home about, that's for sure. And I appreciate the efforts on the applicant to increase the size of the trees and the number of the trees that would be planted there, but I question whether a streetscape of 20 feet that narrow can support trees of that size and of that number in a successful manner that they're allowed to thrive and survive. I'm not the expert on that, so I'd like a little help on that as the case moves forward, but that's a concern.
Well, I'll kind of follow up on that, because I kind of had a concern related to that. First of all, the first thing that jumped out at me was the density, and I was concerned about the density, and I'm like, I'm really not comfortable with that density. So I want to know what five stories with a 20-foot streetscape looks like from the three sides, not concerning on 55. And maybe the applicant might do a balloon test and take pictures from all three sides so I can get an idea of what that looks like. Is it going to be overwhelming, towering over everything, or is it just going to be a little bit above whatever trees are planted? I'd feel much more comfortable about that. I do appreciate the conditions offered to date. I'm hoping we can even make it better as it moves forward. But I share the same concerns about the streetscape. I totally get where they're coming from and why they had to do it, but I think it's going to have a big impact, and I'm hoping they can prove me wrong. Other comments, questions?
I just have one comment slash question. There's an item on the map called amenity and office space. Does that mean that those two items are together in one location? Or are they set, or is it an amenity or an office space? Because it does mention within the application that it's 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office use.
Applicants have, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask a question on that. Are you asking if it's contiguous?
I'm just trying clarification on what's on the map.
Okay. Ms. Dry, go ahead.
The applicants have committed to 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office as well as an amenity, so those would, those would both be included with this proposal.
Okay. And is the office space a prerequisite for, in some sort of phase plan? So are they going to build all the apartments and the office space doesn't ever show up? Or maybe the amenity does, but the office space doesn't, and they replace the office space with the amenity? Are there any guarantees there?
Could certainly work with the applicant moving forward to see if they would entertain a phasing condition. They would have to, they have carved out a component of their PDD to show the office space and the amenities, so we would be looking to make sure that that room is sufficient for the office that they've committed to. And as far as the timing goes, if the applicant's interest, that we can work moving forward with some phasing.
Okay.
Ms. Dry, I have a follow-up question to that. Can they use that 5,000 to 10,000 square foot office requirement to house their office for their apartment complex?
Good question.
Good question.
Would not be able to. Generally, when we look at uses and make determinations on uses, any office that is like a leasing office for an apartment complex is considered, you know, part of that multifamily use. So any office component with this would have to be office that's open to the public. They would not be able to count the leasing office towards that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to express my concerns about density and the potential environmental impact on the area, and especially, you know, that's so close to YMCA. That's definitely, you know, talking about traffic concerns and the pedestrian safety would be a really important issue to address.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Very good. This will next go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review, and they will, they will send a recommendation that will come back to us at a future date, and the council will take, make a decision at that time. Thank you, Ms. Dry. And for those that are watching or spoke for this meeting tonight, I would invite you to continue following the process. Katie Dry is your liaison, your staff liaison. She's the expert on this project, so she'll know all the answers. But if you can't remember, contact her. Just contact me or one of the council members, and we'll get you in touch with the right person and make sure that you get your questions answered. Even though this is the public hearing, please know that every council meeting has a public speaks out, and you can speak at those council meetings as well about this topic. And if the council chooses, we can have another public hearing, but that's usually not the process we follow. All right. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to our third public hearing, 19 REZ 27 Cary Point PDD Amendment, and Senior Planner Deborah Granham will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Ms. Granham?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Your consideration this evening is a request to amend zoning conditions for a previously approved 10.2-acre Cary Point Plan Development District located at the southwest corner of Morrisville Parkway and NC 55 Highway. Previously approved Cary Point PDD Master Plan contains two sub-districts, the residential R1 district, which was previously approved for 120 age-restricted apartments... R1 District, which was previously approved for 120 age-restricted apartments, and the commercial C1 District, which was approved for 25,000 square feet of office and commercial. With this request, the applicant wishes to amend certain zoning conditions only associated with the R1 District, but they are not proposing any changes to the C1 District, or to the previously approved buffers, streetscapes, open space, or the transportation improvement commitments that they made with the previous rezoning. When this PDD was approved last May, the applicant had not yet identified a developer for the residential portion, and since then, they've partnered with a developer who specializes in senior communities. And with that, they've identified some opportunities to take advantage of some financial options. The proposed changes before you tonight are an increase in the number of dwelling units from 120 to 140 units. They'd like to raise the minimum age requirement of residential from 55 to 62. They would like to make the indoor residential amenity accessible to the public, but in doing so, they've offered a condition to eliminate exterior signage that's visible from off-site, and require internal access. And also, in response to citizen, citizen concerns expressed at the neighborhood meeting, the applicant is proposing a new zoning condition requiring full cutoff outdoor lighting fixtures in the residential district. This would help reduce impacts to the adjacent property owners. Staff reviewed the applicant's request against the policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and found that the changes requested don't substantially change the intent or impact of the previously approved PDD. Therefore, our previous analysis and finding of consistency with the plan still stand. A neighborhood meeting for proposed rezoning was facilitated by planning staff at Town Hall in February 2020. There were four property owners in attendance. Questions and concerns at the meeting are summarized in the meeting minutes, and they focused on whether or not there could be additional plantings in the buffers, what the impacts were with outdoor lighting on houses in the vicinity, whether or not the traffic improvements were going to stay in place. And then there was concerns about the possibility of noise that potentially be associated with ambulances responding to emergencies with the senior community.
Unreal.
Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail, and this was advertised and posted with public hearing signs. And this concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments in the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions. On the line this evening, we have Neil Gosh with the Morningstar Law Firm, who will speak to you about the applicant's comments and concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. Ms. Gosh?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Town Council. My name is Neil Gosh. I am an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group. We are representing the applicant tonight for this rezoning, and thank you, Deborah, for your presentation. I think Deborah did a nice job explaining the changes to the zoning conditions. So I wanted to try to offer more about the why, because I know this seems like an unusual request. I think the easiest place to start is by talking about the developer. Bonaventure is one of the nation's leaders in providing communities for seniors who are independent, and they want to bring their experience to the town of Cary. Their philosophy is simple. While they construct the building, Bonaventure recognizes that it is the residents who make the community. They prefer communities which are vibrant, so they provide robust programming to encourage an active and social lifestyle for their residents. Their residents are aged 62 and older, and that's not by accident. Bonaventure has built several communities under the 62-year age restriction, which is less common than the 55-year age restriction, but which is also a federally recognized age restriction program nonetheless. That is to say that this type of age restriction is valid under federal law. The reason for the change to the language and the age restriction is the financing which Bonaventure intends to use. The financing they have secured in other projects, and which they intend to use with this project, requires the 62-year age restriction. The financing also helps explain the language, or the change to the language surrounding the amenities. I don't want to get overly technical, but the financing does not allow non-shelter services as a mandatory condition of occupancy. So put another way, the financing is for residential purposes. What is problematic about the phrasing of the current zoning condition is that it expressly states that the amenities shall not be open or available to the general public. The phrasing of that condition from a financing standpoint is problematic. Rest assured, however, that in practice, Bonaventure's experience at its other sites has been that essentially 100% of patrons who dine at the facility are residents or they're guests. Think of this as like the cafeteria at a hospital or at your child's school. If they were open to the public, you might dine there with your child once in a while, but it is unlikely that you would visit it otherwise. That basically is what happens at Bonaventure's other locations. As staff mentioned, we are proposing to change the prohibition on public access for prohibitions on signage in each location. The increase from 120 to 140 units is a change that ultimately will support the level of programming Bonaventure includes at its facilities. Their programming and other services requires about 17 onsite staff members for the residential portion. The dining facility has, has its own staff, and that would be like about another 15 employees. But the increase in units will help support the residential positions and the high-level programming offered at the site. Moreover, because the age restriction is a bit higher, the proposed project is expected to result in fewer trips than a project under the current zoning. Bonaventure's residents typically are retired individuals, so peak-hour trips are very minimal. Finally, after a very productive neighborhood meeting, we did add a condition related to required outdoor lighting. We have committed to using full cutoff fixtures in response to concerns from neighbors over, about over illumination. Effectively, we think this project is nearly identical to the project envisioned under the current zoning. However, from a traffic standpoint, it actually is less intense. It serves an elderly population, albeit a slightly older elderly population, and onsite amenities will operate very similarly to those envisioned under the current zoning. Aside from that, all previous zoning conditions remain part of the project, and we added a more restrictive condition related to lighting. We're very excited about the project, and I am available to answer questions you may have, and we look forward to receiving your commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Granham, if you don't have any other comments, I'll start the public hearing.
Do not have any additional comments. Thank you.
All right. Now's the time for the public hearing, 19 REZ 27 Cary Point PDD Amendment. And once again, we had instructions available for people to comment through email 311 and regular mail, and all comments were received before noon today. At this time, I'll call on Ms. Granham once again to summarize the comments we received. Ms. Gran?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one email that had several points in it. The citizen expressed concern about noise possibly associated with ambulance responses to the community. They were concerned about ingress and egress to the site. They were concerned about the buffer reduction that had been previously approved, would like to see a speed limit reduction, and concerned about lights. They did express overall that they had general support for the use, but would prefer to see the area preserved as open space.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. I understand we do have a live speaker, and I'll turn it over to the clerk to tell me who that might be.
Yes. Mr. Foley, please confirm that you're the correct speaker by giving your name and address.
Hello, my name's Bill Foley. My family, family and I live at 2801 Bishop Brook Court in Cary, and that's in the Sedgfield neighborhood that's directly across Morrisville Parkway from the proposed development.
Very good. Proceed.
Okay, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. This development is obviously of significant interest to our neighborhood on whose behalf I'm speaking tonight. We want you to know to begin that we're generally supportive of the proposed senior living facility on the site. We view such use as preferable to alternatives like those storage facilities and mattress stores. Seems like we've got enough of those around now. We've had friendly and constructive conversations with the developer. We support most of the requested zoning changes, especially the requirement for full cutoff lighting, the concealment of amenity signage, not a big deal, but the full cutoff lighting requirement is already part of the town of Cary's requirements anyway, based on my review today. But it's nice to have it included in the zoning. There is some concern over the proposed increase from 120 to 140 units as relates to traffic, but the developer has assured us that this will not negatively impact us. So we have three outstanding concerns that we'd like to briefly bring to your attention. And the first is our desire for a visual screen between Morrisville Parkway and the development. The zoning calls for a 30-foot minimum frontage streetscape along Morrisville Parkway, and the PDD application also includes a small spot, pretty small, near the existing Morrisville Parkway entrance, where existing vegetations to be undisturbed. Unfortunately, when you walk the site, there are very few, few mature trees, if any, within either the Morrisville Parkway streetscape or that small zone. So consequentially, we're going to lose the nice view of the wooded site, and the new development will be substantially unscreened from our view across Morrisville Parkway. So we've asked the developer to create a reasonably dense visual, visual screen on the south side of Morrisville Parkway, consisting of newly planted trees, and the retention of the likely few mature trees that exist within that zone. The developer has advised that they'll consider the request, although it's our preference that this be included as a zoning condition. And lastly, and this is just an observation for the benefit of the council, and it's offered certainly respectfully, we've observed that the local requirements for the preservation of mature trees within the street setback zone are frequently disregarded by the contractor. This happened in the development presently being constructed across Wakanaw Road from our neighborhood, where the contractor essentially leveled the site in violation of the requirements, and then just paid the fine. So it seems that the fines aren't sufficient as a deterrent, and we would respectfully encourage the council to consider stiffening them in the future to enforce compliance. So our second concern is with regard to the outdoor lighting. And this is of particular interest to me. I've worked in the lighting industry for over 27 years. I refer myself as a lighting geek. Then there's, there's kind of two sub-issues there, light color and backlight pollution. So light color. The Town of Cary Community Appearance Manual, CAM, allows light sources with a color rendering index, which is kind of a grade card for light color, of at least 21, 21 out of 100. So it's an F. This permits the terrible orange light of high-pressure sodium. That's a technology that was introduced in 1965. And as you probably are aware, cities, cities across the country have been moving away from high-pressure sodium for the past 16 years, towards LED. Cary should do the same. So LED lighting is the standard today. It accounts for over 95% of all lighting shipments in the U.S., and LED fixtures don't cost more, yet they provide superior color, optical control, long life, reduced maintenance, energy efficiency, and environmental friendliness. So the developer has indicated their intention that all outdoor lighting be LED, which is what we would like to see happen. We'd just like to have that binding. The second aspect regarding to lighting is backlight pollution control. I'd be happy to put my lighting geek hat on and explain how light fixtures are rated for light pollution control in the future, if that'd be helpful. This isn't the time and place for it. Certainly don't want to take your evening time to do that now. The, the Cary Community Appearance Manual restricts uplight pollution by requiring full cutoff, that's a lighting term, outdoor light fixtures. That's great. And it's going to go into the zoning, and everybody's happy. But it doesn't restrict backlight pollution. That's light basically coming behind the fixture, behind the pole, outside of the target zone, and in polluting potentially a neighboring property line. So we've talked with the developer about this. They've expressed their desire to protect against backlight pollution, and again, we would like this, for, for this to be made binding. So with respect to lighting, our request of the council is that the zoning conditions include requirements that all exterior lighting fixtures for subsections R1 and C1 be LED with a B0 backlight. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has expired. I'll give you one more sentence to wrap up, and I'm going to have to cut you off.
I was on my last sentence.
Oh, very. Continue.
Yeah, request that the exterior light fixtures for subsection R1 and C1 be LED with a B0 backlight rating to prevent backlight pollution, and that subsection C1 be included in the amendment for full lighting, full cutoff lighting fixtures. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Do we have any other callers?
No other callers.
Since we have no other callers, I'll end the public hearing, the public comment portion. And I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Foley. He asked about conditions. It's very important to understand that we cannot require conditions. So if the developer says they intend, or they might, or they'd like, or whatever, you have to ignore that. So you have to assume that it's not going to happen unless they make it a conditions. That's what we do. So be aware of that, even though they say they intend to. And be aware, we do not have authority to require conditions. I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that. Open it up to other council members. Councilmember Smith, you have any comments on this one?
No, sir.
Thank you. Other council members? Ms. Robinson?
Hey, thank you. I think that the requests that the citizens are asking for are very reasonable, especially since there was that buffer reduction, streetscape reduction on Morrisville Parkway. So although we don't ask for our applicants to submit certain conditions, we certainly can say that we would be much more favorable to the increase in density if the conditions about lighting and additional tree planting along Morrisville Parkway were submitted as official conditions.
Amen. Other comments?
I don't have a concern with the additional 20 units. I mean, Lord knows, we need more housing for our seniors. It's, I think it's a fair request. I actually do appreciate what they're doing with the lighting and making that a condition. I will just offer a comment, because I can't not do it, that I have never heard anything more nimby than opposing a senior living community because of the potential concerns regarding emergency vehicle noise. That is absolutely stunning to me. And I hope should that person who made that comment ever need emergency services, they require one of those quiet ambulances.
Yeah, I appreciate the increase in the number of units, because we know senior housing would be very much needed as more seniors, as the community grows more mature, and we have, you know, we know we add 5,000 seniors every year in our town, and that's much needed. So I appreciate the effort to do that. I really like the project.
Other comments? All right, very well. This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. And to Mr. Foley, thank you for representing a group of people, so that we didn't have to listen to a bunch virtually. That would have been difficult. And I also want to offer to Mr. Foley and others, if you have additional questions, please contact Mr. Granham, contact me, or council members, and we'll be glad to get answers to your questions. And you have the opportunity to speak at every council meeting between now and our decision at the public speaks out portion of the meeting. All right. We will move to our last public hearing. It is 20A03 Charles Edward Gates and Kristen B. Gates trustees annexation. And once again, Ms. Granham will introduce the hearing, and council will not take action, but it will be a decision at a future meeting. Ms. Granham?
Mayor, this is a request for annexation of 1.2 acres located at 8712 Green Level Church Road, approximately 300 feet north of the intersection with Mills Road. The annexation includes 0.24 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is contiguous to the corporate limits. It's located in Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned residential 40 with a watershed residential overlay district. This request is not associated with a development plan or a rezoning. The property owner simply wishes to connect the existing home to Cary Water, and in accordance with the town's regulations, the property must be annexed before it can connect to public utilities. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff does recommend that council defer action to a future meeting in light of the 24-hour public comment period following this public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. Now's the time for the public hearing for 20A03 Charles Edward Gates and Kristen Gates trustees annexation. And we don't have any speakers?
That's correct. No submitted comments.
And no submitted comments. So I'll open and close the public hearing, and open it up to council members for questions or comments. I will say or comments. I will say, my question was, why can't we go ahead and annex it? And you answered that. We need 24 hours. So we'll make sure to get this, we'll make sure to vote on the annexation at our next meeting. Other questions or comments? All right.
Let's sell them some water.
Thank you, Ms. Granin. We'll now move, we'll now move to our discussion item. We have a council-initiated item for the creation of Human Relations Inclusion and Diversity Task Force, and per council's operation procedure, the council as a whole may take one of the following actions. We may discuss the issue and take action at the meeting if no information is required from staff and if council does not seek public input, or we can refer the request to a future council meeting at which time staff report and staff recommendations can be prepared, or we can decide to not pursue it at all. So those are our three options, and councilmember Deuce, councilmember Bush introduced the item, so I'll recognize Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Mayor. The past few weeks have been tough, and before I start, I want to acknowledge that many of us are concerned that we might say the wrong thing or make a misstep, but I also know now is not the time to be afraid of that, but rather to open our hearts and listen with everything we have and find ways to have actionable change. We're at a moment now where no one really knows where our story's going to go, but I and this council have had a history of doing things not just because we want people to feel good, but because we want to base our decisions on data and then take action and make data-driven decisions. So that's why I'm proud, Mayor, that you signed the Obama Foundation pledge, the commitment to action, that has actionable reviews, as we heard from our town manager. I also believe that it's time to ensure that we have diversity as a part of what we do. We've been proud in the past and continue to be, to highlight the diverse population that we have in Cary and the numerous festivals and events that we have that celebrate our community. These are well-loved activities, and I know that our community loves being at them and would love to return to them when the pandemic is over. When is it ever bad, in many ways, to get more brilliant minds and voices and people to help us? I also think it's a good time for us to ensure that we have diversity across our boards and commission and to tap into the community that we have here to get advice and recommendations on the best way to do that. So my submission and pink slip is that I'd like our town staff to assist on the, on a process and creation of a citizen advisory task force that's focused on human relations, diversity, and inclusion. And the mission of this task force would be, of course, to help foster diversity and inclusion across our community, our programs and our activities, and of course, our boards and commissions. And I do want to be clear, I see this group as being actionable, right, with tangible results, and I also see that they could act in an advisory capacity, be a resource for experience and information, make recommendations to town council that would help us communicate and deliver more services effectively, potentially work with other boards and commissions on, and even town staff, and assist with new ways to do outreach to our diverse community, and of course, increase awareness of our town services, and provide us the feedback that we need. And in a sense, I hope that they would help us and provide assessments on where we are and where we need to be.
Thank you. My comment, only comments to that is, I would like it to be, when we, if we send this to staff, have staff come back with a set of tasks, a timeline, and so it's clearly defined, and it's not open-ended that just drifts on forever and nothing ever happens. That's kind of what I'm looking for. Other comments or questions, or are we ready for a motion? Mr. Smith, comments or questions?
Well, actually, I'd kind of like to hear from Jalou, who's the second on this, and get her perspective also. In addition to that, I think one of the reasons that Cary has the reputation as it has of being inclusive and with a lot of diversity is that we have a Sister Cities organization. Now, the name kind of dates to the 50s when it started under President Eisenhower, but the whole mission of Sister Cities is to engage with all of our citizens and to improve the diversities of our, our community and our relationships. So I really can see one of the possibilities of this task force as giving challenges to our Sister Cities program and make, and let it raise its level of involvement. So that's just kind of a personal hope there as we move forward. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Lou?
Absolutely. I appreciate Ms. Bush's leadership in bringing up this initiative. I think it's timely, and in times of division, it's really important for us to bring people together, and I appreciate the efforts to do that, and I don't think, like, we wanted the idea of, like, following exactly the quota, right, you know? Say, one out of six members in Cary is Asian, and you have to have, you know, an Asian member on a particular board. I don't agree with that approach, but I do think bringing members from a diverse community would really bring their perspectives and bring their insights, and let us know what they need, and communicate with the council and our government and our staff what we want. We want citizen input. It's not just from a homogeneous group, so I think this initiative would do a lot of good. But I agree with Mayor. We, we want a clearly definition of the scope of this project, the timeline, and what exactly we want to accomplish. We don't want just to make people feel good, and we want actual items, items that, the clear goals we are trying to accomplish, and the, the real steps we can take to accomplish what we're trying to do.
Other comments or questions? If not, I'll recognize Ms. Bush for motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to have staff assist us on a process and the creation of a citizen advisory task force focused on human relations, diversity, and inclusion.
Ms. Lou, would you like to second that?
Yes, second, please.
Okay. Discussion? All right. Roll call vote, starting with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Proton France?
Aye.
Mr. Yara?
Aye.
Ms. Lou?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Bush?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Motion is unanimous, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Steigl. You see any issues? You have any questions? You need any information from us before we pass this on?
No, I think there's, I'll provide the council with a lot of different options, but I know one thing that will be required that maybe hasn't been in a situation like this is, we need a skilled consultant, because a part of this is maybe there's some things that we don't know what we don't know, right? And I think it's indicative of Cary to be able to, we want to, we feel that we're really good, and we want to remain good, and so validating that process and then kind of finding out where some of those gaps are. But at the same time, we need someone who comes from this field, but also has a lot of experience in working with local governments, because sometimes, you know, great ideas and well-intended ideas are not actionable in a very practical way. But a consultant will have not only that experience, but that kind of advice and can do it in kind of an impartial way, and there's some really brilliant people out there. So as a result of that, this will, this will take, it will take some time. Doesn't mean it's going to take forever, but I don't think anything worth doing ever happens quickly, right? And at the second time, there will be some, some investment involved, other than just staff time, some real investment, because as you can imagine with the way things are in this country around now, this group of people are highly sought after, and, and we don't want a consultant, we want the best consultant. But that, that will be of great assistance in, for anything, just to assure a higher level of objectivity and scrutiny that I know that the staff welcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Steigl. And to summarize what I've heard, combining your comments with Ms. Lou's comments, we're not doing this to make people feel good. We're doing this for real change, and to do real change, we're going to do it the Cary way, and we're going to do it the best way we can, and that, that's what I'm hearing. So thank you all. Ms. Bush, thank you for bringing this forward. There are no other items tonight. Before we close, COVID-19 is spiking, so I urge everyone to be safe. The negativity, the nastiness, divisiveness is growing rampant. I'm used to it. A lot of people are not. Please be kind, and overall, just be Cary. No other business. Meeting is adjourned.[1736.91]